Welcome, everybody, to our City Council meeting for Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Appreciate you all being here. Our opening will be provided by Councilmember Perry Oaks.
Okay. I've been reflecting over the last number of months on our nation and the freedoms which we have and oftentimes take for granted. And sometimes on some of the civil liberties which we seem to freely cede it back to a federal government. And I remember a time back in 1980, I won't say how old I was, but it was before my mission by a little bit, and had an opportunity to go to Berlin. And we took a troop train from Frankfurt up to Berlin. It was one where you're on the train, it's overnight, kept the windows closed, you're not allowed to open the windows and look down, and they would stop a couple times and East German soldiers would come on and make sure you weren't looking out the windows. But what I remember the most was we had a chance to go into East Berlin. And we were on a bus and we went through Checkpoint Charlie, which was the American gate that people went through. And we leave West Berlin, which in 1980 was a beautiful city, I mean it is today as well. It was the jewel of Europe. And you go to East Berlin and you still have the pockmarks on the buildings from World War II, which was 35 years ended. And you saw the people that were standing in line, in breadlines, and East Berlin was the premier city in the Soviet Union at the time, in the Soviet Bloc. And people were still out there in long breadlines. And they'd go into a store, if you wanted a size 12 shoe, and they only had a size 10, you got the size 10. And you took it and you were happy. And it was such an oppressive feel that when we left East Berlin a few hours later and we drove back through Checkpoint Charlie, we're on the west side, the 25 to 30 people on the bus with us, it was palpable. And we cheered that we were back where we had the freedoms which we were used to as Americans or as Westerners. And just that, as we think and as we reflect every now and then, the freedoms which we have as a nation, which many have fought and bled and died over, and they just would leave that with you. So I guess, now I pray, right? Okay. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this day, and we're thankful for our nation, our freedoms, and the opportunity which we have in to be able to live in this great country and in this wonderful city of Caseville. We pray for those who are going to present tonight and for those who are looking and understanding that we might be able to make wise decisions and to be able to benefit those of this city which we represent. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
And so if you could also stand with me and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Did we have anyone sign up? Oh, for Call to the Public, we'll see. No, okay. We don't have anyone signed up to speak during our Call to the Public time, and so we will move right along to our presentation. Ammon, will you introduce yourself?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So my name is Ammon Gruel. I'm actually here in place of Nate Allen, who was originally coming, he had another commander. And I represent an organization called Utah Approves. It's a 501(c)(4) here in the state, and we're a nonpartisan organization advocating for improved elections. And so Nate is the President and I'm the Vice President. And I'm also, I'm a Layton resident, even though my back fence actually borders Caseville, so I consider myself a resident of both. And I actually ran for the Legislature in 2020, so you may have seen my signs around the neighborhood as well. So, happy to be here. I have a brief presentation to share with you as soon as it gets pulled up. All right, so today I'm here speaking about approval voting, how it gives us savings, simplicity, and security. So a little bit of context with this presentation, there's various voting methods that are being considered by the Utah Legislature at this point, and this is one of those voting methods that the Legislature is considering. So what is approval voting? It's simply that you can vote for all the candidates that you support on your ballot, and you're not limited to just one. So here on the left, you can see plurality voting, where you select one for a race where there's only a single winner, like a mayor or a governor. And here on the right, you see approval voting, where you can simply vote for more than one, if you actually support more than one. Now, oftentimes I get the concern, well, doesn't this violate one person, one vote? Well, that phrase, it actually refers to a Supreme Court case where one district had a whole lot of people and another congressional district had very few. And so the vote of someone in that very few carried a lot more weight than in the district that had a lot of people. So that's really what one person, one vote refers to. It does not refer to being able to mark more than one on your ballot. I mean, this is, approval voting is very similar to what we already do for City Council races, where there's two seats and you vote for two. And a quick thought experiment here, let's say I vote for candidate A in a race and you vote for candidate B, C, and D. Well, all those candidates are still tied between my vote and your vote. No candidate gets a real advantage from voters being able to mark more than one. Next slide. So, how's approval voting a little bit different? First of all, approval elects based on favorability rating, really. It's like a job approval type poll versus our current system, which is really exclusive support. So a little bit different dynamic there. Approval tends to favor candidates with a more broad-based appeal, because you want to get approvals from as many people as you can, even someone that may like a different candidate a little bit better, versus our current system, which favors candidates with a passionate base of support. And finally, approval works well in races with any number of candidates. Since voters are really giving a thumbs up or thumbs down to each candidate individually, you can have two candidates in the race or 100 candidates in the race, and you still get good results, you get a good metric of what voters think about the candidates. Whereas our current system really only works well with two candidates for a single winner race, because otherwise you end up with spoiled elections, you know, a spoiler candidate throwing the race one way or the other, and so on. So, next slide. So why else do we do approval voting? So first of all, cost savings, and we'll dive more deeply into this on the coming slide, but it's the idea that we can potentially skip a primary election, you know, here in the city, you can skip that municipal election. Next, approval voting is more expressive. So, I mean, if you like two candidates, you can vote for two. If you only like one, that's fine, you just vote for one. It just gives you that option of being more expressive on your ballot. Next, it limits vote splitting. Oh, sorry, I'll go back to the slide really quick.
I'm sorry.
You're fine. So it limits vote splitting, and that's the idea that, I mean, let's say two City Council members do something really awesome for the city, and then the next year they both run for mayor. Well, those citizens of the city that really liked what those two City Council people did, their votes would potentially be split between those two council members, right? And so if one of them didn't run, then they would all go to the one. And so you see how votes can be split between two very similar candidates. And that's an unfortunate thing that happens in our current system, but it is not present in approval, because voters can simply approve a vote. Next is you end up with clear winning mandates. Again, we'll dive deeper into this in a future slide, but you just end up with higher percentages in your elections. Next, you end up with higher voter satisfaction with consensus winners.
So, can I?
Yeah, of course.
You said I could ask you a question, right?
Yeah, I said you could.
The, I mean, and I totally understand the, you know, Supreme Court ruling where it's sort of been that one person, one vote, but in a sense like there, instead of voting for one person, I get to vote for three. So you and I, you and I are voting, I know who I want.
Yep.
And so I'm going to vote for that person. You might not want that person, so you're going to class three votes to make sure that, in a sense of that person, there's three votes against that one person. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense, and it's a very valid concern. I get that concern all the time. It goes back to what I mentioned briefly before, in that if you vote for one and I vote for three others, I mean, they're all still tied. The candidates I like actually didn't get any advantage over the candidate that you like. And so it really still comes down to whichever candidate gets the most support, gets the most voters supporting them. So it's a little bit different dynamic, it's probably something you haven't seen before, but it is, it doesn't actually give candidates any advantage, per se, in that way. So, going on to the next point here, you end up with higher voter satisfaction with consensus winners. So in a crowded race, which is where approval really shines, you may have a candidate winning with only 20% of the vote, because it gets split a bunch of different ways, right? And how does that 20% really give that person, you know, a strong mandate to lead? If they have an agenda they want to carry out, but only 20% of voters actually supported them, that's not a really strong mandate to lead. Next, approval voting is secure, transparent, and easily audited. So I like to say it's the conservative voting reform, simply because in no way does it jeopardize the security of our election. It's just adding up votes, just like our current system, there's no complicated rounds of tabulation or elimination, it's just simple addition. It's very transparent, the ballot is almost identical how it is currently, and it's audited in exactly the same way. Next slide. So diving a little bit deeper into the cost and time savings. So like I said, approval works really well with crowded races, and so you really don't need a nonpartisan primary that narrows the field. For Caseville, based on a grammar request that we did, you guys spent $24,000 on your primary election last year, and so that would be money saved to the city, straight up. And voters would only have to vote once, they wouldn't have to go to the polls twice. And that's really nice, because not that many voters show up to the primary election anyway. You only get slightly over half showing up to the primary election as you do to the general. And so it's very low anyway. So being able to eliminate that primary would be a cost savings and a time savings to those voters and to your election officials. All right, next slide. So approval voting is very simple for all parties involved. For the city, there's very little voter education that's needed. I mean, voters are already used to voting for two, for, you know, City Council races, so it's not a big change, much less than if you were to opt in for ranked choice voting. The candidates, it's a very simple strategy when you're campaigning, you just appeal to as many people as possible. Again, it goes back to how approval favors candidates that seek a broad base of support. And candidates don't need to explain the voting method to every voter they talk to. That was a huge concern with candidates running in cities with ranked choice voting last year, is that every single voter wanted them to explain the intricacies of, you know, ranked choice voting tabulation. You just don't need to do that with approval. It's simple for the voters, like I said, only one election, you have very simple ballot instructions, it's almost identical, it's just you can vote for one or more. And actually, you have much fewer spoiled ballots. Currently, our ballot spoilage rates in the country are somewhere around 2%. Doesn't seem like a lot, but it's significant when you have millions of votes being cast. So with approval voting, that number drops to almost zero, because it's very hard to mess up an approval voting ballot, since voting for more than one is one of the common ways that ballots are spoiled currently. So, and finally, it's very simple for the county, there's no new software required, the ballot size is unchanged, so there's not two, three, four pages of ballots, it's just a single ballot, like it is today. And then the elections remain precinct summable, which is a key element of voting security. If you can tabulate it all locally, then, I mean, if you wanted to attack that election, you have to attack a bunch of localities, whereas with ranked choice voting, for example, it has to be all centrally tabulated, a single place, a single vector of attack. Next slide. So let's go back to higher voter satisfaction really quick. You may recognize the results here on the left for that plurality reelection, the 2020 Republican gubernatorial primary, where Spencer Cox won with 36% of the vote. Now, this was a crowded race, and so that's why you saw much lower percentages. Now, was it really only 36% of the electorate that liked Spencer Cox? I dare say probably not. But since it was split so many different ways, you ended up with really low percentages there, and that really doesn't give the governor a strong, strong winning mandate, I guess you could say. So compare that to here on the right, the approval election, you see the 2021 St. Louis mayor primary, again, a crowded race for candidates, but you saw the winner win with 57% of the vote, a very strong mandate to lead. Even the third-place finisher finished higher than Spencer Cox in our gubernatorial primary. And so with that approval election, you actually see true levels of support for each candidate, regardless of how many candidates are running. Next slide. So this is some research done by a Princeton math PhD, named Warren Smith, it was done a couple decades ago, actually, and it's just comparing different voting methods, and it compares it on two metrics. Along the left-hand side, you see the y-axis with simplicity, so voting methods higher in the graph are simple, while those lower down are more complex. And along the x-axis, you see voter satisfaction, so voting methods further to the right result in higher voter satisfaction overall. Can you click once? All right, so I just want to make extra sure that you understand that this is with, a simulation with five candidates in the race. Because if you only have two candidates in the race, it just doesn't matter what voting method you use, they're all the same. So it really only matters if you have a crowded field, okay? So with five candidates in the race, in our current system, go ahead and click again here, our current system plurality is right there in the middle, it's very simple, it's near the top of the graph, but it has fairly low voter satisfaction. And that's because of things like a spoiled election, maybe a third party jumps in the race and swings the result the wrong way. Or two candidates jump in the race that are very similar and split that natural electorate that would have supported either one fully. You get a lot of instances like that under our current system, so that's why you end up with overall lower voter satisfaction. Next. Next, you have instant runoff voting, that's just another name for ranked choice voting. You can see that it can have much higher voter satisfaction depending on the circumstances, depending on the race, but in the worst case, it actually isn't much better, because you still can only support one at a time, one at a time. And next, finally, you have approval voting there on the far right. Again, it's very simple, even simpler than our current system, because there's no restriction on how many you can vote for, you're just removing a restriction. And it's very high voter satisfaction, because you don't end up with those spoiled elections and vote splitting, like you do with the others.
Ayo.
Dramatic positive effect here.
So, okay, so let me ask another one. And my mind often runs to, I don't know, the contrary, what, you know, I'm looking for negatives, sometimes, you know? It seems to me that this is a great system if you're trying to get rid of someone, because if there's five candidates and I don't like one, I'm going to cast four votes for, you know, everybody else. So...
It seems easy to manipulate, right?
Well, it feels that way to me. I mean, I understand it would require candidates to try to be more generalist, in a sense, to look for greater approval, but heck, if I can't do that, if I'm doing a plurality vote, then maybe I don't deserve to be elected. I mean, I don't...
No, those are valid concerns. I don't claim that any voting method is perfect, none are. No voting method is right. Every voting method has its pros and cons, and so really what I'm doing is presenting some of those, the pros of approval voting, and you guys are going to have to weigh that against any potential cons.
But elections are still at the county level? I mean, the city, okay, because that's one of my major concerns with ranked choice, is it all goes to the state.
Right.
And...
Literally, nothing changes with approval voting, except for that people can mark more than one, nothing else changes at all.
Okay.
How many cities are currently using approval voting?
So actually, the next slide, I think...
Oh, talks about that?
...talks a little bit about it, yep. Good question, great segue here. So where has approval voting been used? So, very similar systems have been used around the world throughout history, most notably in papal conclaves, so choosing a pope, used for a long time in Italy and in the Greek legislature, and it's currently used to select the UN General Secretary. Most recently, here in the US, it was adopted by Fargo, North Dakota, and St. Louis, Missouri. And here on the right, you can see some polling results from voters who had just recently used it in St. Louis. By huge margins, you can see that the instructions were clear, they were easily understood, it was easy to use, they were comfortable with it, and by a three-to-one margin, they liked approval and wanted to expand its use. So, I mean, even half of voters thought the election was more positive than before, so less polarizing, less negative, so that's another benefit here. Next slide. So this is just a really quick summary of comparing three voting methods. On the left, you see our current system plurality, in the middle, approval, and then on the right, ranked choice. So we'll just run down these really quick. Cost, again, it's high under our current system, because you have to run two elections, because our current system just doesn't do well with crowded races. With approval or ranked choice, you can eliminate that primary. Next, high winning percentage, again, with our current system, if you have, you know, 10 candidates in a race, you might end up with a candidate winning with only 11% of the vote, and literally every other, you know, 90% electorate voted against them, but they still win. That just doesn't happen with approval and ranked choice, you end up with candidates with, you know, typically a majority of the vote. Next, voter satisfaction, again, going back to those simulations that I showed you, it tends to be fairly low with our current system, just because of vote splitting and spoiled elections. With approval, it tends to be very high, just because it tends to elect someone that the broadest possible electorate is happy with, and then ranked choice, it can be kind of hit and miss. Next, ballot spoilage, again, ballot spoilage is when voters incorrectly mark their ballot, and if the county clerk can't tell what their intent was, it gets tossed out. It's moderate under our current system, it's very, very low with approval and relatively high with ranked choice, because it's so easy to mess up a ranked choice ballot.
You got that over here?
Yeah, great. Next, new voting software, again, no need to change voting software or voting machines with our current system or approval, but you do need to make those changes ranked choice. Ballot size remains very small, with our current system and approval, no change. Again, with ranked choice, it could balloon to two, three, four pages, potentially jeopardizing a vote. Because it would make it potentially cost prohibitive. Next, counting complexity, again, it's just simple addition, adding up votes for each candidate for our current system and with approval, whereas that complexity is very high with ranked choice, and you risk voters losing trust in an election if they don't understand how that tabulation occurred and their favorite candidate lost. You've seen that outcome happen repeatedly throughout the country in places where they use ranked choice voting. Next is precinct summability, again, it's all local for our current system and approval, whereas it's central for ranked choice. And then finally, voter education, none required with our current system, there's a little bit of voter education, teaching them about the change with approval, and then a significant education with ranked choice. So that's a quick summary, hopefully that's helpful. Last slide, just what we're asking you to do today. Currently, the Legislature is considering a bill that would add approval voting as an option for cities to use in 2023. And so we're just asking that if it's something that you, as a City Council, are interested in potentially adopting, just contacting your legislators and asking them to support adding this to the municipal pilot program. And then, once it is an option, we ask you to consider opting into this pilot program and using approval voting in 2023. So obviously, there's a lot of time to deliberate before 2023, but we'd love to hear your questions and concerns and answer those. And that's the end of my presentation.
Is the Legislature voting on that this session?
The bill is currently being drafted.
Okay.
It should have a bill filed within the next few days, and...
May or may not go through.
I mean, if it goes quickly at this point, it will go through. If not, it may be pushed to like an interim committee, or it may go to the next session.
Okay.
Do you know who is sponsoring that bill?
Yes, it's Representative Robertson from Provo, he's a Republican. And then the Senate sponsor, I believe will be Senator Thatcher.
Ask a good question. What, I'm trying to think of like a nice way to say this, like, what's your, I mean, here's the, maybe the blunt way, like, what's your angle with doing this approval? I mean, I'm just like, is it, are you guys wanting to run the approval voting?
So, our role is just a support role. We're a nonpartisan organization here in Utah.
Okay.
We're just passionate about making our elections safe, secure, and effective, increasing trust in our voting system. I think trust is at an all-time low right now, and largely that's because people don't feel, they don't feel represented, they don't feel heard. I believe that increasing expressivity allows people to truly be heard and represented by people that represent them better.
So, I guess, are you guys going to be the folks who run the approval voting? I mean, is that the idea?
No, the county clerk would run their approval voting. We would definitely help with...
Consultants or something?
We would help with voter education, we would consult, obviously, with county clerks, even though there's, I mean, not a whole lot to consult with, they know exactly what they need to do. There's no new software or anything like with ranked choice, but we would be in a support role with voter education and consulting, for sure.
Okay. I just, my biggest thing would be like, you know, the data here is two cities, right?
Right.
And so, you know, a lot of that information, while helpful, is also subjective to, you know, personal opinion, I think, and so that's the only reason I ask that question, hopefully it doesn't seem hostile at all.
No, that's a perfect question, and really, I think that's the spirit of this pilot program. Here in Utah, we don't necessarily want to adopt something that hasn't been tried and tested, and that's the whole point of this pilot, to allow some cities to try it out, and then really gather some good data before we make any decisions at potentially a statewide level. And before we try it here in Utah, we just don't know any more than we know about.
I have two quick questions, if you're done, Dave. When did Fargo and St. Louis adopt this voting method?
Fargo, I believe, adopted in 2018, and St. Louis in 2020.
2020, okay.
So they've both used it for a single election.
And, you know, for the first half of your presentation, I thought this was ranked choice voting by a different name?
Okay.
And then when you started talking about the difference of ranked choice voting in this, then I had to switch gears and try to figure out like the difference between the two. And I think I kind of understand it, but I'm still a little bit...
Okay. Yeah, so in ranked choice voting, you rank each candidate, one, two, three, four, and your vote is really only going to your first choice until they are eliminated, and that happens when they are the lowest vote getter. So if your first choice is the lowest vote getter and gets eliminated, then your vote would transfer to the next one that you rated that's still in, still in the race. Whereas approval is just a single round, everyone, you just vote for as many as you want, and those votes are just simply tabulated, they're added up.
My question is kind of what Councilmember Oaks talked about, it just seems like it would be really easy to manipulate it. I guess you, I don't know, just by not voting for everybody except the one person that you don't like, or the two people you don't like, or something, so I guess, is there a way to avoid that, or not really?
I would say every voting method is subject to manipulation.
Got something?
I guess, to define manipulation, it would be potentially voting like dishonestly, like voting for someone that you didn't actually like, is that kind of what you're saying with manipulation?
Just to disqualify people, yeah. I mean, if you vote for everybody and you get all your friends to, not that people do, but, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, with approval, it's somewhat subjective who you vote for. I mean, if your standard for approval is really high, you might only vote for one, but if your standard is really low, you might vote for all but one, and that's still okay. Like we did with the thought experiment earlier, it still doesn't advantage any candidate voting for all but one, it just expresses your dislike of that one. Again, that's just a favorability rating of each candidate, and the candidate with the highest favorability rating wins.
Or if you're millennial, you vote for everyone, so no one should have to...
That's true.
I mean, that's the same as not voting, but I guess that is an option.
Different.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions?
No.
No, Abby? No, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. Okay, so now we will do a declaration of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have anything to declare? Oh, well, so the Utah Recognition Award, we're going to push that to next meeting, we've got a couple of awards. Yeah, thanks, Mike, though. Any declarations of conflicts of interest? No? Okay. All right.
So, oh, this is the one, okay. I thought he was, he's, you're not presenting tonight?
Yeah.
I thought he was supposed to be, he thinks he's on the agenda.
Oh, well, then you sure are. All right, we'll turn some time over to you.
Yes, Curtis Koch, Davis County Clerk Auditor, here tonight to simply, first of all, acknowledge that the longstanding relationship we've had with Caseville City in administering your municipal elections, and we appreciate that. In this regard, there are several considerations right now for very... right now for various methods of, of voting. The pilot project that is currently in place. What I would say to the council is, we are able to conduct approval voting with, with our current system, and we're happy to do that. We would obviously look to you as the policy body and hope to continue our relationship with you. But this is a form, an alternative voting method that twenty-nine, all twenty-nine county clerks have said, yes, we can do this if cities are interested. Not necessarily advocating one way or the other. There are alternative voting methods that, that the clerks have not been supportive of, ranked choice voting in particular. But this is one that we, we can stand up and say, yes, we can deliver that and, and provide the confidence and the election that you've hopefully come to expect from our service. And so, that's what I have to offer to the discussion and would be happy to answer any questions now or in the future, as you have questions about alternate voting methods.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions?
Hey, Mayor, I, just, just one comment. Nate, were you, did you have something?
I just have one question.
Sorry, go ahead.
You can go first. I guess we'll start on the left side here, so. Have, do you know if you or any of the auditors around the state, clerks have met with Missouri or Fargo?
No, not at this point. This is, this is a, a method that has been brought to the state by private citizens, saying this is something that we would like to see. When the legislature opened their pilot project for alternate, or alternative voting methods, it was a pilot project that only allowed for one method, which was ranked choice voting. I think that opened it up to where other citizens said, well, hold it. Here's a voting method that we would like to see in this pilot. Now, that will be at the discretion of the legislature whether they do that or not. And I think that's what Ammon was talking about, where, as this bill comes out, if this is something that cities are interested in, then they should let their, their legislators know. But at, at this point, no, we, we haven't reached out and talked with, with Missouri or Fargo. But we look at what it would take, and our systems will be able to administer this in a safe and secure manner.
And I was just gonna, the, the county clerk office did, I thought, a very good presentation that I, I think it was just last week that I attended, might have been two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And, and I appreciate the effort that you all made, you know, holding three sessions on that to be able to inform members of the county of, of your efforts with the voting. So I just appreciate that.
Thank you. And we, we found that to be valuable, not only for the citizens, but for our staff to be able to engage. And so we're actually going to be holding one session monthly for the remainder of the year. So on February 23rd, at six o'clock, we have a voter integrity, an election security presentation. It's about an hour. Our last one went two hours because we had so many great questions from folks. And we'd invite all of the public to come down. There is no question that is off limits. We want to have all the questions and, and be able to have that discussion with the citizens and help instill confidence and integrity in our election system.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? No? Thanks for being here. Okay, moving on to our, our consent items. Does anyone have anything they'd like to move? Okay, looking for a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, John. No, I, I defer.
No, come on, it's your turn.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move consent items A through B for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Oaks.
Aye.
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 Thank you, that passed unanimously. Okay, perfect. Where now, we have a work item. Chief Oberg.
That was quick. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to address this body tonight. Tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about the compensation study that we did. I, I sent, had a packet sent to all of you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to, to look at it. And hopefully, I can answer any questions you have. I tried to address in this packet some of the issues we talked about last Friday. And if we can just briefly go through this, and if you have any questions along the way, please, please ask. Our compensation study included thirty-four agencies. We didn't pick those agencies. The consultant picked the agencies that we compared to. It, it included all of the positions, all of the sworn positions in our department, not our non-sworn positions. In, in here, we tried to do the effective date that cities have, have given raises to their, to their officers. We tried to do wage by position, salary increase by position, where we would rank according to, by position, according to our comparables, and some recruitment and retention incentives that I think Councilmember Adams asked about. So on, on this page, you'll see I've got the Salt Lake City agencies, or out-of-county agencies, if you will, because there's a couple of Weaver County agencies in there to the right. Kind of like I talked about last Friday, most of these happened July or around that time. There's a few that have done some things afterwards. And on the left are all, all the Davis County agencies. And you'll see anywhere from September to, to now, to just, just recently. All of them have done an increase, except for Sunset. Sunset's in the process right now of, of doing the study.
Chief, could I stop you for just a minute?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should have, for people watching, I should have turned some time to Shane to kind of set this up. We had a work session, just in case people were curious, and where we were talking about wage increases. Did you want to say anything about that, or?
I didn't.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if I skipped you.
Yeah, no. I wasn't planning on it, but yeah, happy to elaborate if you'd like me to.
Okay. Thank you.
Or I could do a few-
Okay, that would be great if you'd like to, just so we can-
Yeah, so last Friday, I addressed the council and yourself in, I don't know if it's called a work session, but for lack of a better term, we'll call it that. And I brought to the council what I would call a crisis in law enforcement right now, and that's our ability to recruit and retain officers. And I, I think on that session, I told you that, that same week, I'd been told that Utah was down about five hundred officers in correction, and that same amount on the street. This last week, I talked to a member of the post council, and he told me that staff is actually probably eighteen months old, and it's, and it's most likely much worse now. So I, I think a small degree that was, COVID put, put a little pinch on that because we weren't able to get as many people through the police academies. That hurt us a little bit. Some of the defund the police, you know, movement hurt some recruiting and retention. And some of it's, some of it's generational. This, this job is not as attractive as some other jobs, like in the tech sector. It's very difficult to work from home and, and be a police officer. And weekends, holidays, shift work, and it's generally not been a great paying job, but we have traditionally had a lot of people that were altruistic enough that wanted to do this. And, and when I got into the business twenty-six years ago, we filled an entire, when I, when I tested for my positions, they would fill entire high school auditoriums full of candidates. And you'd have eight hundred candidates for one or two positions.
Wow.
And like Salt Lake would take many, many days to, to test just one group. But, but these days, you're, you're pretty fortunate to get twenty applicants. And most of those have not been through the police academy and frankly know very little about what they're getting into. And that adds an extra expense on to departments, and you don't even know if you're going to get a candidate that's going to stick around. We, we hired a fantastic young officer out of Detroit, probably, or maybe it was New Jersey, but a couple of years ago. And he had a great story, and he'd been an officer out there. And, and he actually had a police shooting happen in, in his backyard, and an officer was killed. And he really wanted to, to be a part of this business. And we hired him, and we sent him to the police academy. And his last week, right before he was going to take the test, he decided it was too, too stressful for him, and he dropped out. And so we spent all this time and money. And, and so you just, and we've had that happen a couple of times. And where, you know, twenty years ago, people had already put themselves through the police academy and borne that cost on themselves and knew what they were getting into. And it, it's gotten to the point where we used to, if you could get somebody to ten years, you knew you had them for the, the next ten. But that's really gone away. And we see ten-year officers leave, thirteen-year officers leave, even seventeen- or eighteen-year officers leave. And they're really close to retirement, and they still just decided it's, they can't, can't or don't want to do this anymore and, and get out of the business. And I think our next big crisis that I'm, I'm not here to talk about today will be a leadership crisis in law enforcement, because we won't have those, if we're not holding onto those five- and ten-year officers, who's going to be a detective down the road? Who's going to be a sergeant, a lieutenant, and a chief, if we, if we can't give these folks any experience along the way? But right now, we definitely have a, a recruitment and retention issue. And it's gotten to the point where we just essentially are poaching officers from other agencies because there's not, not enough out there. And it's, it's not for a lack of effort. Law enforcement has really tried hard to, you know, go to job fairs or hold job fairs. And some departments have full-time officers or full-time units actually out recruiting officers. And like us, we advertise nationwide. One of our, one of our newest officers, fantastic officer, we, we hired out of Wisconsin. He was an officer in Wisconsin, and we were able to, to get him here.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's helped us. It hasn't helped us in Utah as much as some other states. Idaho, for example, has been very successful in getting California officers to go work for there. We, we haven't been as successful as that in Utah. But we all are making efforts to try to, because I think we have a, a great state here to live and work in. And I, you know, I think we're not being disingenuous by telling somebody, hey, come, come from Arizona, come up here, you can have a better life, better job. But it's difficult to, to get somebody approved their whole life and do that. And it's, and it's very difficult to get us, to find people to come into this business and, and more importantly, stay in this business. So we have done a pretty good job recruiting, and we have good candidates, but it, but it is the retention issue that we're really faced up against. And one thing I mentioned in that work session was that we have fallen a little bit behind in, in wages. And, and, you know, if we have a ten-year officer who's making thirty-two dollars an hour, and he can go to another city ten minutes away and make forty dollars an hour, I, I can't begrudge this person for trying to make his, his life and, and improve his family situation by doing that. You know, years ago, I might have thought it was a loyalty issue, but, but right now, I can't say that. And we have, just because of some of these, these wage increases, we have cities in this county that start higher than, you know, a two-year officer would make for us. And, and so are officers that are five-year officers are making about the same wage as some other departments are starting their officers, i- it within Davis County. And if you go out of the, out of the county in the Salt Lake Valley, it, it gets much worse. But-
Is that what the next slide shows us a little bit?
Well, on this side, you can kind of see where, when the raises have come. So it kind of started in Salt Lake County in our area, and now it's come, come our way.
So hard.
But yeah, if we go to the, the next page, this, this shows just an officer, like a line officer, starting and, and ending wage. And it's a little bit tricky to, to put together. We did our best to make this accurate because some departments have different levels of officers, of a police officer one, two, and three, and a master officer. And some agencies, that, a master officer means different things in some agencies. So we did our best to make this as accurate as, as we could.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, is this where Kaysville, where we currently are compared to where these other cities have gone to? Or is this is what we're proposing?
I think this is current for everybody on here.
Okay.
To the best of my-
So, so if that, I mean, if I'm looking at it, it, we don't look all that out of whack?
No, if you, if you look at this, our top end is, is forty-one, thirty, and this was the result of a wage study that we did probably two years ago.
Yeah.
That really got our, our wages in line. One problem, I think we've fallen behind a little bit, but not, not terribly. But one problem is that when we did that wage survey, and we increased the, the floor and the ceiling of each position, we didn't move people within that range. These other cities have done that. When they've moved their, their floor and their ceiling, they've moved their employees accordingly. And that's why our ten officers, or our ten-year officers that are making, you know, maybe thirty-two dollars, could go somewhere else and make forty, because they've pushed their ranges or their officers up. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it does, yes. So you got this range of, you know, twenty-four to forty-one. And, and there's obviously steps. And I don't understand how often or how easy it is for them to step up and, and move up in that range. I guess my question would be, is it something we could, you know, you could do internally without doing a whole rate change? Or, or minimize?
Yeah, we can do some work with, if we move people in their existing ranges without completely taking apart the, the schedule. One issue we have, and a lot of cities have gone to, at least for their police, a ten-year pay plan. And ours isn't a ten-year pay, pay plan. We don't really have a, a stepping grade like some cities do. We have kind of a, we have kind of a, a standard merit-
Merit-based.
But it, but part of it is performance-based, too. Where, like in West Valley, you have a stepping grade, and no matter what, even if you do a terrible job, you're still going to get an increase. And the expectation is that the administration will deal with that officer who's done a terrible job. You know, like retraining or put them on, on a performance improvement plan or terminating them. But they can say, okay, in five years, this is where I'll be. In ten years, I'll be tapped out, and this is where I'll be. And, and we, we don't have that here, so we can't do that. And if our, if our raises or our, or our COLAs, Dean's story showed you kind of the, the system we use for COLAs. If, if our COLAs are smaller than another city for a couple of years, it really waters down our-
Sure.
-plan, our pay plan.
You're not necessarily, well, we're maybe pushing you to the end of your slides, but you're not necessarily saying that we should change the way we structure our pay plan here. I guess we're maybe-
I, I would like to see us restructure that for the police department. I haven't had a lot of conversation with my city manager about that, so I hate to get into that too much. Because I feel like, you know, in fairness to Shane, I should have that conversation with him. But, but I do think that that is an issue for us.
I think that's, maybe, and I don't know if I'm treading on your, what you're saying here, Councilmember Oaks, but it would be that maybe what he's saying is, are you not suggesting that we change the actual plan, but that we move people up in our existing plan? And you're saying that you'd prefer, like, your adjustment here at the end is, is to just move them up in the current plan? Or is it to totally change the way, does that make sense? Like, so like you-
I, I think moving them up in their current plan is the most important thing.
Right.
I think that maybe looking at our, our pay plan and trying to go to a, a ten-year plan is going to keep us from having problems in the future. And I think we should also look at our positions. Because, you know, we're not, we're not way out of whack, but if one of our officers can never get to- But if one of our officers can never get to forty-one dollars because it's over the course of twenty-five years, then it does us no good to advertise that. And if we start our officers at twenty-five and two cities down, they're starting them at twenty-seven fifty.
Right.
You know, so I think we do need to look at the salary, the schedule of the starting and ending wages. But also how long it takes them to get there as well as where they are currently. Because where they are currently is gonna be the biggest factor in whether we lose them right away or not.
But just so I can understand, the ask, the critical, what's critical right now is just to be able to have the funding necessary to move people within the current structure.
Yes, correct.
Right, okay. Okay, so not necessarily to redo it, like you said, but just to make those movements, those increases possible, right?
Correct.
And will it still be merit-based? I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, are there still, will they still have some, a little bit of like, hey, you have to show that you're good?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
I mean, you're not gonna just throw out, which maybe we should. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't. But is it just gonna be a sweeping motion or is it gonna be, have you gone through each one and...
I've gone through each one.
Okay.
And, you know, so I've got a range of, like, I think it was two dollars and something to ten dollars and something, depending on...
Two to twelve, yeah.
Their position and, oh, yeah. Their position of where they are in the schedule and some of those factors that you just mentioned, some performance factors as well.
We interrupted your presentation, sorry.
Well, and having, you know, spent most of my life in the federal government, one of the things I really caution against is increase when there is no merit. Because you get, in a civil service world, one, it's impossible to get rid of a drug dealer and, which took me two years to do. And yet they're still getting pay increases.
Yeah.
And that's...
Absolutely, I agree with that a hundred percent. It's hard on the organization too. Because if you have high performers getting essentially the same increase as somebody who's doing absolutely no work. I mean, it's really bad for morale, it's bad for business.
Okay, good. I just needed to make that call, yeah.
No, I appreciate that.
I have a few questions. And so I looked this up and just wanna confirm. So police officer job summaries, the class titles, like Officer, Police Officer One, Two and Three. Do you follow that as far as compensation? Like, one would obviously be brand-new officers.
We do. In fact, ours is a little bit different. Because for a Police Officer One for us is somebody who hasn't even been through the police academy. So when we send them, they have no skills when they come to us that way. And so we start them at a Police Officer One. And most cities, Police Officer One is somebody who's on the street doing the work already.
And would that start then at twenty-four oh seven an hour for a Police Officer One?
That's actually our Police Officer Two that starts at that one. That's somebody who can be in a patrol car and do the work already.
Okay.
And...
Which incidentally is like fifty, I mean, let's talk yearly salary. This is like fifty-six grand a year. I mean, that's, that's crazy.
A few more questions. So do you find, like, when looking at the entry-level police officers in One, Two and Three, is there a certain portion that you find they're leaving the force or jumping to other cities?
I'm seeing it all over the place. I've had, in fact, I've got a ten-year officer right now talking about leaving. But we've had them all the way from just brand-new recruits to about a year, maybe two years ago, we had a good officer, he was three or four years in. And so it kinda runs the whole gamut. We haven't really had any past that ten-year mark leave us. And I hope we can keep that that way. But that's the group that I think is the most at risk right now. Because that's, you know, some of these cities have raised their wage to forty or forty-one or forty-three dollars. And if they can go there and make eight to ten dollars more, then, you know, why wouldn't they?
Sure. And so do you think it would be better to bump the prices up more on the front end? And then have it kind of plateau or kind of in the middle?
I would like to see us get close to that twenty-seven dollar mark for starting wage. So that we're compatible, or competitive, sorry. And one thing I would like to do on the top end, and I talked to our city manager a little bit about this, but not in great detail, is a lot of these cities are doing away with the master officer position and some of these other in-grade positions and just making at one table just peace officer and ten steps and taking away that master officer position and some of that salary at that top and doing something different with it. And I think there's some good things we could do with that too. Maybe education incentive or some incentives, like Councilmember Adams and I were talking. You know, it would be nice to recognize maybe a certification level or something. If an officer's gone through something to really improve themselves and what they can, their effectiveness as an officer, it would be nice to recognize that. And that might be a way of doing it that's, you know, that would avoid what Councilmember Oakes said, that just everybody gets it because they've been here for X amount of time.
Right.
So I think that's appealing to me and I think we could do some, some good things with some of those type programs.
Just...
Shane, I have a, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm asking so much. So that twenty-seven, would that be the start pay with the Class One officer?
No, I would say, you know, if you're in the police academy, I still don't think you should be compensated at the level of somebody that's been trained and worked in the street. I feel like they're already kind of getting a free ride in essence that we're paying them and getting them through the academy and we're paying their wage while they're being trained essentially. So I think we should make that distinction.
Okay. That's good to know. And I did look up, I was looking up data earlier today and on Indeed, I don't know how credible that is, but that's probably the best data I could find on my lunch break. But Indeed showed Kaysville as twenty-six percent below the national average in pay. And that was the lowest out of several of our neighbor cities. Centerville was twenty-three, Farmington was twenty percent below national average, Vanniful twenty-three, Layton fourteen percent. So I just kinda found that kind of interesting. Salt Lake is twenty-seven percent above the national average. But it looks like all the other cities are kind of below, so...
And I do have one slide, I'm not even sure which one number it is. But it does a ranking by position and kinda shows where we are compared to this. And our top outs for every single position, we're in the bottom half, which is, in my opinion, an issue.
Here's the previous slide.
Yeah, ranking by position, yeah.
So I think this is an issue. I think this, you know, is part of why I think we need to look at the whole plan, the whole compensation level, the starting wage and ending wage. But like you alluded to there, the most crucial part is trying to compensate now and get them to a place where we're competitive right now.
Looking at this slide, can you explain that again? Like, it says twenty-seventh out of thirty-three, are these thirty-three of our closest neighbors or...
Not necessarily the closest, but these are the thirty-three that the consultant selected as are comparable. So it runs, I think Weaver County's the furthest north. Weaver County, I think Ogden's in there, I believe Roy's in there. Most of the Davis County agencies are in there. Some Salt Lake County agencies, I think Park City may also be in there. American Fork and a couple of Utah County agencies also.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I do, since it's a work session. So, you know, this is, this one makes me sick to my stomach, it really does. Because, you know, I come from being an employee for Kaysville City for so long. I'm like, yeah, give them everything you can give them, yeah, whatever, you know? But then I have to say, okay, you're also a council member who's spending people's, other people's money, okay? And so I looked at all these and I looked at them as close as I could. I tried to be as objective as I possibly could. And I looked at it and I said, yeah, our police officer looks pretty comparable. I mean, it looks, it's low, it needs to be fixed on that low end, you know? But as you look at that and compare it with the thirty-three other, the ones you used, the twenty-six or whatever, twenty you used out of the thirty-three, it's pretty close, I think. And then I look at the sergeant and I'm like, how did we fall so far behind in that one? You know, and that one's the one, yeah, I'm concerned on that. And what I, I look at that and I say, a ten-year guy, and I talked to you about this a little bit before. He said, you have a ten-year guy that's at step three. And I'm like, why is he at step three? Ten-year guy should be around step eight, step nine or something. But I don't know how he got to that point and where it's at, you know? So I can't say. So I think individually, there's places to take individuals and get them the money that they need in order for that individual without having to just blanketly increase the entire thing. Because I really do believe the patrol is pretty close, looking at it and that. And I look at the lieutenant, definitely same thing. I don't know, I say, where's our lieutenants in the realm of this? You know, it's hard to say when you don't know where that individual person who's working for the city and where they're at at that point. And is there a lot of room? Is there room that you have in discretion to move them up in that position? And say, yeah, you're down too low, you've been held back too long, I get it, I see it, we need to move you up. And it used to be it was steps, so I have to use steps. I think even our current salary has steps to it. Does it?
We went away from the stepping grade system two years ago.
But it still has, it's still merit-based though, correct?
Sure, sure.
And that's what I thought, it's still merit-based. It's still within this, you fall within this merit point A to point Z, okay? And I'm saying, yeah, you know, and I look at the chief, I think we're good on chief, you know, sorry. But I guess, you know, and we've done so much for the employees over the last two years. I, you know, I wish, I would've had an advocate up here doing what I think we've done for the employees for the last few years for Kaysville City. And I just don't know, it's just, it's never enough, you know? I wish, you know, and so I look at it and I say, okay, you could approve why you come in here now and it's, you say it's a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to finish out the year. But really what you're saying is, it's not just a hundred and eighty-three, it's the four hundred and thirty-three extra. Because you can't take them up and then take them back, you know? And that doesn't even include the thirty percent for benefits, which would be on top of this number. And so that puts you up in the six, seven hundred thousand, six hundred thousand area. And like I said before, I was kinda hell-bent on no tax increase. I was trying to live within our means for a year because we've done tax increases. I think there's room in our current system to make it right. I do. I mean, for heaven's sakes, if we got a ten-year sergeant in there that's not getting paid enough, move him up in his steps, get him where he needs to be, for heaven's sakes.
That's what this...
You know, but...
The four thirty-three is, Councilmember.
That does that, I mean, that's what it takes.
That's what I'm doing. That's not pushing us...
So that's not moving your rates, that's not changing the range of rates? That's just moving, that's what it takes to move the people you have currently within?
Yeah, that's given, and maybe on like lieutenant or something like that, that might be moving the rate, but for the...
I could see it on the sergeant.
Ninety percent of the...
And the assistant chief.
Officers, it's just putting them in a range. It's giving our one-year guy, putting him up to like twenty-seven. Our two-year guy up to twenty-eight. And, you know, our ten-year guys probably, you know, around forty or thirty-eight or somewhere that it's gonna make it more difficult for...
You know, and I do see these salary survey comparisons and they started in July, I think it was at two, and all these others have been from September on. So obviously, their chief has been to their council and says, we're too low, we need to do this. I thought we were where we needed to be because I thought we went through and did a whole compensation thing a year, two ago. And I thought we were where...
Two years ago.
Two years ago and we were where we needed to be.
It was a good survey and I felt like city manager and our city leadership did right by our employees. And, you know, we didn't, one thing we didn't do was give them, you know, like Layton City did, here's a fourteen percent increase. We gave them their normal increase and we just increased the top and the bottom. And that's why, so when you have a ten-year guy who was maybe in the middle of our last pay scale and you move the bottom up and the top up, that's why he's at a step three now. Because we didn't move the employees with the ranges.
I would like to be able to do this. I just wanna make sure this is the right thing to do and we're doing it the right way. I'd like to be a little bit more on what individuals, where they're at, where they've been in that position and why are they down here and why are they not up here?
And I'd be happy to talk to you about what I, what I've come up with and where I think people should be. I do think that needs to probably be in a closed session.
I do too, I absolutely do too.
But I've got that right here.
And you know, and I, and my other concern also is, there are roughly after the police department, there's roughly another ninety or a hundred full-time employees for Kaysville City. And I absolutely wanna make sure that they get their cost of living raise this year and they get their merit raises based on their supervisors or whatever. I don't want to affect that at all, you know? And so I have to be very careful. And I'm trying to do this all without raising taxes. And so...
That's why they pay you the big bucks.
That's why, well, you know, we've done it the last two years and I'm not ready to do it again. And so I guess what I'm saying is, how can we do this and do it within our means? And that's why...
And I'm probably not the person to ask.
And that's why maybe I need to find out more individually where your officers are, who's where, how long they've been here, where, you know, who are your sergeants? How long have they been sergeants? Where are they at on the scale? You know, because if there's a couple of guys that have been here for five years, maybe there's a two-year sergeant to a seven-year sergeant, they're making the same. A seven-year sergeant maybe needs to get bumped up or something, you know? That's, this is a tough one for me, it really is. Because like I said, I worked here for a long time, at least I had an advocate for me, you know, when I was here, but...
Shane, I have a question. So when we have salary ranges, you know, like for example, salary police officer, twenty-four to forty-one, do we budget at the top end at forty-one? We don't, we budget for whatever the current salary requirement is?
Plus the increase that they could get. We have a program where it's merit-based and cost of living. So we'll go into a budget session with a cost of living number and then maybe we do budget like a worst-case scenario for merit. Not everybody will get their merit increase, but we'll plan on that, but yes.
But we don't, so when we're advertising a range, we don't advertise the top end and then try to get the best that we can?
We will, we can advertise that range and we can fall within that range somewhere. But it depends on, I mean, if we're talking about police wide, that's thirty-five to forty people. So as we hire though, we can have some flexibility in that.
Right, I was just wondering if, how much wiggle room there is? Because you get someone that's, you know, not as experienced and you can pay them less.
I think if we had a pressure situation with chief, if he had an officer that he really valued come and say, I've got a job offer, I'm going to so-and-so, we have the discretion to fight for that person and within that range, move them up. And we would probably do that. Unfortunately, we believe this is a police, not just a Kaysville police-wide problem. This is a Utah-wide police problem that we need to address. And if it was, you know, if he didn't have to increase his budget, we wouldn't even be talking about this right now. He would just do it within his budget.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make that point.
But obviously, a hundred and eighty-three thousand is well outside his budget.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure people understood that.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand that, that that's the process, go ahead.
And the only, the other problem with advertising the range, because it looks decent, but I can't bring, I can't bring somebody in with fifteen years and say, I'm gonna put you here... but I can't bring, I, I, I can't bring somebody in with fifteen years and say, "I'm gonna put you here above further ahead than our fifteen-year guys that have been here, working for the city for that long."
Right.
It's just, it's not right.
But isn't that what these cities are doing? Aren't they saying, "We're gonna bring you in unilaterally, pay you exactly what my other five-year guy is here," and is that what they're doing?
I'll bring a five-year guy over where our five-year guys are, but I won't bring them past that. So if I don't, if my-
If your five-year guys are making X, then you can't-
Yeah, if my ten-year guys are making thirty-two bucks, I can't-
You can't hire somebody else.
Then it doesn't matter if I'm advertising at forty-one, because I'm not bringing anybody over past that, that thirty-two, or, you know, wherever they would fit in there, I'm not gonna bring them past where our existing employees who have been working their time here are.
Right.
Chief-
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Abby.
This is a, a question for you, I'm just thinking, if this is something that keeps happening, and I know I talked to you a little bit, kind of on this vein of, you know, if, in my mind, we should, I guess, try to find a way to be competitive, like you're saying, or, or even more, um, but do you feel like, because to Councilmember Blackham's comments in our, our meeting, you know, we maybe don't have a specific place in the budget where we could get it, but we do have some one-time type funds that we've talked about. Do you feel like in, in lieu of moving them up, we could offer them the equivalent amount in like a, a bonus, and then work until the next uh, budget to try to find a, a different, because I feel like we're, we're playing the same game, but, but, but playing the same game and starting from behind. I feel like if COVID's taught us anything, it's that we need to, to innovate more. And I'm not saying that you haven't looked into a lot of different options, but I know, talking to you, there are a lot of different options, and maybe just increasing pay isn't, isn't the best one. I mean, because that is, we're essentially tying our hands, saying, "We're going to pay this for, forever." But, but offering to, to, to John's, um, point at the, at the training also, some sort of like bonus-type incentives, and not like, like pistol grips or, 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 you know, sights, but I, I don't know, maybe this is out there, but I just think if we can take care of this crisis with a one-time, like, bonus, or say, "This'll go to here, and then maybe we'll, we'll change it up," but that it'll be better, do you feel like that would be bad for morale?
I'm, I'm willing to try anything, but, um, I don't think this crisis is gonna go away. I, I, in fact, I think it's, it's gonna be, when I'm talking to the other chiefs, we're all scared to death. We don't want to, none of these other chiefs want to go back to their mayor and council and say, "Hey, I know I was just here one year ago and you did all this great stuff for us, but I'm back." None of us want to do that, and I didn't want to have to do this in the first place. And as you can see, we're, we're about last in this county. Because I, 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 I think that we do have a lot of, uh, good things in this city, in this community. Uh, our city manager's done a lot to try, a- as Councilmember Blackham mentioned over the last couple of years, to really try to make this a, a great place to, to work. And I think we have a lot of those things, uh, working in our favor, and, um, one of these pages towards the back, I've, I've done a list of our current recruitment and retention incentives, and, and we do a lot of-
Yeah, you do.
Thank you for including that, yeah.
And we do a lot of things, and I have to thank, uh, this, this body, our city, city leadership and city management, because, um, we do this obviously without, without the support of, of this group, and, uh, you know, we have, we do some great things, we have some great opportunities, but, um, you know, officers are, tend to be fixated on their retirement, um, that's like the light at the end of the tunnel. And, um, these things unfortunately don't, don't help with that, and they don't generally help, uh, you know, our, our younger officers buy house, or qualify for a, you know, to get into a house with their young families.
Right.
And, uh, so I think it's always gonna come back to wages and salaries and, um, you know.
So, can I ask one question? On your recruitment and retention, were you looking to change any of those at this? I, I mean, because you gave us the comparison of what some of the other cities have done and differences. Are you, are you happy with what you have for those issues right now?
I think that, I think we could, there are some things we could do, um, that some of these other cities do that, that kill us, and the, the eight to ten-year, uh, compressed pay scale, that, that hurts us. Uh, that's something that works against us. Pay, paying extra to our officers when they're training, a new officer, training a new recruit is difficult, and it's a pain in the butt, and when all the other cities are doing this and we're not, then it, you know, it's one little thing against us. And so some of these things, I think if we introduced and, and introduced within our pay plan by changing some of the, the step, uh, steps in here, so that it's not above what they, uh, could ever get anyway, because as, as the city manager, uh, mentioned to me, well, we would need to do that for the entire, uh, city, you know? But if we're doing it within their existing pay plan, I think there are some, some other incentives that we could introduce. And, um, I've talked to Councilmember Hunt a little bit about a housing program, and, and I'm not saying we should do that, but that is something that, uh, some cities are, are starting to do, because they're trying to get their officers to, to live and work in their own communities, and, and those have been effective for the departments that are, that are doing programs like that, and that's some of that out-of-the-box thinking, and I, I think at least one city has done it with, uh, some of their ARPA money, at least initially.
Could you expand on that, specifically what some of the cities are doing with housing?
Yeah, um, so like West Valley City, uh, will give a, a grant, so to speak, uh, ten thousand dollars towards a down payment if that officer will live within the city, and it's contingent on them being, uh, living there, I think, for five years. If they don't, then they've gotta pay that back, and, and, uh, housing stipend as well. Um, and once that money's gone, it's, it's gone, so it's kind of first come, first served. But some of those, there's some cities that have gotten pretty creative with some of these things, and it, they really used to only be, uh, with cities like Park City, that, well, nobody can afford to live in Park City, how are we gonna get anybody up here? So they, I think they kind of pioneered some of this stuff, but now it's, you know, it's in West Valley City, that, uh,
Who'd want to live in West Valley?
They just want that police car being seen over the West Valley.
And, and they want their people to be close, so that when an emergency happens, uh, they, they can get on scene quick instead of coming from, you know-
From Ogden.
Yeah, yep.
You know, I, I I think one of the biggest unknowns in my mind, because I, I got you and I, I understand, and you don't, you hate losing people because it's so difficult to replace, and you said, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for each officer you lose is the replacement cost. So you lose two officers, and that's the end of the year, right, you know, end of year, that's what you're looking for right now. It's, um, what I don't know is, and, and again, this isn't you, yours to answer is, how do we pay for it with, without having to raise taxes, you know, if possible? And, um, that's my biggest question, is, is how do we, how do we pay for it?
And if you would like me to come back with an answer, then I'm happy to try to sit down with Shane and Dean and have, and come to you with a better answer.
Because we have to look at this, this isn't, I mean, if it was a one-time thing, this would be pretty simple, but this is the gift that keeps on giving.
Absolutely.
I, yeah, but I see that-
It does, but don't we-
That's where I'd, I don't think so.
That's why we have a little bit of reserve there, right?
Well, I mean, because that's, I mean, that, honestly, that's what we've thought about, right? This whole time, or since you came to us, at least for me, what's been on my mind is, how do we pay for it? How do we pay for it? Because it's perpetual, right?
Yep.
And we look at each year, we're, we're bringing in more money, because we're making more through taxes and whatnot, so you hope that that would give us a chance to be able to pay for it in the, in the future. And, and yet, like you said, it is a situation where we're going to have to keep paying for it, but at the same time, you get what you pay for, and so that's what keeps coming to my mind is, well, of anything that we want to get really good, if we want to have the best, is police officers and, and firefighters and the people, I mean, you know, if you're paying the most, you're gonna get the best. And, and not always, but for the most part. What that requires, which I think I have full confidence in you, is being able to get rid of the ones that aren't great, you know? And so, a- and I think this, at least for me, this gives you another tool in your belt to be able to be like, eh, let's get rid of so-and-so, because we can pick up all these other guys. A concern that we brought up is that, does this snowball into then they raise them and they raise them? It's just like, you know, back and forth, and I don't know, Nick, if we, you were at the meeting, but we were talking about whether or not having, uh, them sign something is even possible, or if, if there's a way to keep.
Like, yeah, employment contracts.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, so, so that we don't see this like, oh, Casville just raised theirs, now Layton's gonna raise theirs, Topal's gonna raise it, you know what I mean, like, uh-
Yeah, uh, widespread employment contracts are, are, I guess, potentially possible, but there's not a-
It's hard to claw back that money.
Teeth in them, and it's hard to it, 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 you burn a lot of political capital going after an off, a first-year officer who's stressed out and can't, and so he quits, or a ten-year officer that says, "Hey, I'm gonna go make mu- more money," sometimes the cost of going after it is not. I, I mean, there's one employee in the city that's a contract employee, that's the city manager, and there's a reason why there's only one employee in the city, because they're hard to administer. They, uh, you know, Mr. Scott brings a lot of value to the company, to the city, and, uh, him leaving would be really catastrophic in a lot of ways.
Oh, yeah, big time.
Well, a- any good city manager is.
No, I know.
You know, for rank-and-file employees, they just, they're really difficult to administer and difficult to enforce on. We've had, we've had contracts where we've had new officers sign to reimburse for equipment, but when they leave, it's-
Are you gonna really chase after it?
You can't really go, it's difficult, you can go after them, but it's cost prohibitive to go after them, and-
And that's the answer that I suspected, I, but I wanted to reinforce that. So I think the way that you avoid that or keep people is that you make it merit-based, so that they look at it like, "Oh, I don't really want to leave, because if I stay one more year, I'm gonna get my bump," which is, I think, what we were trying to do, and, you know, a couple of years ago when we changed the system, so that people could actually look at that each year and think, "Man, one more year and I'm gonna be here and there." Yeah, for the employee retention and just keeping you on the track. So, my thought is, I, I think we've got to figure out, I, I think, I'm prepared to, and we don't necessarily need to do it, but I'm prepared to trust you and have faith in you and move this to an action item, to give it, to give you what you need to keep these officers, that we need to find the money, whether it's not raising taxes, but actually using some of our one-time funds to supplement us for a year, and hopefully we catch up. And if we don't, what I see happening is us going to you, maybe after two years or whatnot, and saying, "Guess what? We don't have the money, you're gonna have to find a way to, to make your budget decrease." And maybe that means you have to get rid of a few officers, but maybe you have such great officers now, because you've hired the best, that they can, they can do what you need them to do with one less, or something like that. I don't, I mean, that would be risky, I know that's asking a lot of you to say, like, in the future we might have to say we need you to scale back, but isn't that part of like what running a business and doing a budget is, is like asking people to scale back, you know what I mean?
Yeah, um, yeah, that's what we do in private businesses, but-
What are your thoughts on that, chief? Does that scare you to hear like, "Oh, we might ask you in three years to have to have less, or to spend less money, because, you know, hopefully we don't have to, hopefully we grow," but it seems like you'd rather have eight people get paid, you know, eighty grand a year than have ten people get paid sixty-five grand a year, or sixty, seventy grand a year, you know what I mean, like?
Well, a- and, uh, it doesn't do me any good to get extra positions if I can't keep people.
Right, right, it's just expensive.
Retaining the people is the priority, but we live under that idea all the time anyway.
Right.
And, uh, we, the money that we are given by the, the council, the, the city administration, you know, it's, it's taxpayer money, there's, it's important to, to be good stewards. I try to be a good steward, so that, um, you all trust me, uh, what I say when we need something. And there's been years that we didn't buy cars, because, you know, fire department needed air packs uh, one year, and so we didn't buy cars, and I knew it was gonna hurt our fleet, and our fleet got older and our maintenance costs went up, and, and we had crappier cars, and it took us like three years to get out of that. But, uh, I know our role in, in this community, and, um, every year that you give us the money to operate, you know, there's no guarantee that we're gonna get that every year, I know that, and-
I mean, the bottom line is, chief, is this is in the top six. This is one of the six items that a city provides for its citizens. It is as important, if not the most important, as any of the six, and in any given day, all six have a major importance to it. And so, yeah, we have to figure out how to make this work, we do. But, um, in doing that, I just, I've always tried to live on a budget and be good stewards, and I, and I guess what I, I'm asking of this young man out here, Levi, is, "How are we gonna pay for this and how are we gonna sustain it?" That's what I need to know. I mean, that's really the bottom line, and is there some way that we can get in there and figure out the guys that are, you're, you're concerned about and get them where they need to be? And, and maybe that's not doing a whole blanket thing, maybe that's looking at individuals, and that's, I think you're saying you're doing that, you've done that.
Yeah, didn't we, I mean, like, we, was it a private meeting? I don't know, maybe not, but we, I guess what I could say comfortably is, we, as a council, have done everything to keep you, because we like you a lot, and-
Because we trust you.
Because we trust you.
We trust your judgment, we trust your leadership.
And so I think, at least for me, that's where it's like, comes down to, is, you know, you could present your list of names to me and tell me what you've gone through, and I'm not sitting here thinking, "Oh, well, it's because he likes X person better." I trust you, I don't need to see that because I don't-
I don't, John, that's, I don't want to know the person, I just want to know the person in that, not the person, just that position, where they're at and why.
And maybe that's something infor- informative, for me, I don't, for me, it's like, I, I, I trust what you're gonna do, but, and I think if, for paying it, at least for me, like, comfortably knowing that we have a pretty good nest egg to do one time, I'm with Mike, I don't want to do, like, you know, I'll let the cat out of the bag. I don't want to do truth and taxation this year, because I want to give the citizens a break. I want to pay for it with one time, I want to see where we end up with taxes, and, you know, if Amazon, if we keep having people bring stuff to my doorstep, we'll just, we'll pay for five new officers.
Yeah, my wife-
Thoroughbred, right? So, for me, that is like, we can pay for it with that stuff and then address this if it comes down to where we have to give you less money, but at least you're paying the officers what they need to stay here.
Are we, are we comfortable then, um, it's, it kind of sounds like we're comfortable moving it to an action item?
I would move it, but-
Can I ask one more question of Levi?
So that we can have more discussions, yes.
Before we go, we're not prepared to talk with Levi about the finances, and if, I think what we're looking for tonight is a consensus that you are interested in doing this, because I don't want to spin a bunch of wheels of the chief, or Dean, or Levi, if you aren't. So if I'm hearing that you are interested-
This isn't a specific question, I just want Levi, Levi, he should have a good idea of the answer to the question I got.
Well, I, I, as long as we're not asking him, "How are we gonna pay for this?"
No, no, no.
Because that's a very broad, and, and, and I, and I guess just so finally, so that you know, um, if you are interested in this next meeting, chief and Dean and I, and Levi for sure, will sit down, and we will tell you how we can pay for it now and in the future, and, and then I guess, just so you know, that in the next fiscal year, you'll have this four hundred thousand dollars up against cost of living increases and, and all the other things that people ask for, and you'll have to make that determination. And, and you're right, we do, we have had very fat times, uh, we got the seven years of, of, of lots of wheat, and, and we'd like to not have to just spend all of that on, on, when we do have lean times, but we're, we're, uh, doing well financially, so, I'm sorry, Councilmember Blackham, go ahead.
So the question I have for you, Levi, normally, and you can just nod your head or whatever, um, normally the COLA is, you know, cost of living increase has been somewhere around two percent, somewhere in that neighborhood. I project it's going to be much, not more than that this year, because obviously it is more than that. So will that also move the compensation plan up that percentage?
A range?
Yes.
Uh, I believe it will.
When we adopt a COLA, it moves that up.
That's correct. Twenty-four dollars an hour would be three, four, or five percent higher based on that cost of living.
Thank you.
And we would, we will take the cost of living and propose that that goes into the budget.
Which is like, what, twenty-five cents more?
I don't know. So if we have, if we have, if we're able to move this to an action item, if you guys are comfortable with that, then we can have Shane and Nick and Dean and, oh, not Nick, sorry, Levi. Come come back and 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 have more discussions on that, right?
We'd like to present to you a budget amendment where you would just then adopt or tweak or decline to to adopt.
Okay.
And that necessarily might not be two weeks from now, right? I mean, would that give you enough time or would you?
I think so, chief, and I I guess I feel a little bit like time is of the essence here. I think he's got officers that are waiting to see what happens. So we don't probably need to rush it to the seventeenth, but I think we can do it and I think we're prepared to do it.
That gives us enough time.
If you don't, if you don't feel rushed.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we move uh the suggestion and hear the presentation to an action item.
A second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Thank you. Um, Councilmember Blackham.
Aye.
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 Okay, your motion was unanimous. Thank you. Move that to an action.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it.
All right. Councilmember reports. Does any, anyone have anything they'd like to report about? Councilmember Adams.
Uh, the uh youth city council, it's three, it's three weeks away, well, three weeks on the third.
Probably four.
Excuse me, is that four weeks? So maybe I'm reporting it too soon. I guess it is.
It's a month.
Okay. Well, get ready because we're going to have a lot of city councils, so put it in your calendar.
Fantastic. That'll be fun to participate in and watch. Anyone else? Okay, I will tell you that the council has been hard at work. We're doing lots of things to support um our city um at the Capitol. We're having lots of training. We had a UAMPS training today, which was fantastic. We appreciate everyone that was there and um I just appreciate all the work everyone's doing. Okay, um, city manager report.
You, I meant, I wanted to mention UAMPS. You did that already, so thanks for going.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So do. So move.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. You wish I was too? Thank you.
It's just, I I see.
Other people say exactly the same thing. That's what I was trying to say.